Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of April the 14th. All of our council are present with the exception of Mr. Luna, who is traveling today and is excused. The first item on our agenda is to review our agenda for our Monday meeting on April 18th. So please take a look at that document and let us know if you have any questions or would like any additional information on any item on that agenda. Mr. Brady, anything that staff would like to?
Just, I would like to highlight that we have four or five items on here. We're buying equipment from Empire, so it's worth, I think the value is over $900,000. So able to support a local company in Mesa, so we're pleased about that.
That is good. Lots of, thank you to Empire for lots of good jobs in Mesa.
Yep.
Mr. Thompson.
Mayor, on item 8A, I will need to recuse myself from that because of my client, so I will have to have that pulled from consent.
Okay. 8A will be pulled, and Mr. Thompson's declared a conflict on that. Vice Mayor.
Item, just a minute, I just had a, is it 7A? Or did, sometimes when I bookmark it, it changes later. But it's, is it the 32nd Street project still on?
No.
Oh, sorry.
That might have been an older.
Okay, then maybe there was an older version and it got updated. Okay, so I don't have a question on that, since it's no longer on there. I noticed in 5N, and let me make sure it's still on 5N from when I looked at it, there was a grant, yeah, for the Mesa Electric Utilities Summer Indoor Health and Safety Program. I'm excited about that, and if there was someone, just explain a little bit more about what that is, great. If not, kudos for having these ways to escape the heat.
Sure they were hoping you would ask that question.
Good morning, Mayor. Vice Mayor Frank McQuaid with the Energy Resources Department. So what this application does is it targets our low-income customers who have challenges replacing their older inefficient air conditioners. They can create all kinds of issues for them. It creates indoor air quality because they're not filtering and processing the air efficiently or effectively within the household. It's a very inefficient air conditioner that's prone to breakage, prone to breaking down. So this program starts a program that we hope to expand in the future with other grant monies where we're targeting low-income customers. They're typically not the owner of the building, and so the landlord doesn't pay the electric bill, so they don't have the motivation to replace the air conditioner. It's a renter, so they're probably not having the motivation to invest the money it takes to replace the air conditioner. So this program kicks off that as kind of a pilot, if you will, so that we can start expanding this program in the future with other funding sources.
And Mayor, Council, we probably, it'd also be good to recognize that there are several items on this agenda where we're receiving the pass-through grants from our Native American communities and really appreciate their willingness to support, whether it's directly to city programs like this or other groups that are in the city of Mesa that are also benefiting from the dollars that they are receiving. So we appreciate their support, and there are several items I think Council can see on the agenda related to those grants.
So Frank, how does the program work? Does some, do residents apply for that if they're aware their air conditioner is not performing and they need?
Yeah, Tony Kudoren's leading the effort on this program, so I'm going to have to go from a little bit of a challenged memory. But we will be collaborating with a local nonprofit firm that will help identify the customers, expand it. With the amount of money that we're talking about, I think we're talking less than 20 customers initially. So I think based upon our historical communications with customers about their bills and about these issues, as well as certain parts of the city, we will have a good idea of where to approach the customers if they're not approaching us for this program.
So is it replacing or just repairing the units?
In some instances, it may be a repair, if that's the most effective way, but I anticipate that most of the customers will end up with a new air conditioner.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Brady, so just so I understand what you said, that when I reviewed this, the agenda, it seemed like there were multiple grants from multiple Indian tribes, and these, I was under the impression these are applications, but these are actual awards?
Sharon, will you help clarify that for me, please?
Because that's.
Maybe this is the application that has to have an endorsement from the city council.
Mayor and City Council, these are actually the applications to the tribes. This is city council's opportunity to support applications by the local organizations to the tribes for this funding. It is up to the tribes, then, to determine which organizations will receive those awards, and then it allows the city manager to then accept and pass through those awards without having to come back to council at a later date, and that will be more efficient on the back end.
And Sharon, but the application to apply for an application, it's not, is it somewhat of an invitation also to do the?
Not for these tribes.
Okay, these are different, okay.
For these particular tribes, it's not by invitation. That would be a different process. But for these particular tribes, it is done simply based on city council's prior guidance to me as the grants coordinator of City Mesa to provide the resolutions to you to support these organizations. And so it's based on criteria that was set previously for us to pass through, and then it's up to the tribes to decide who they want to award the funding to.
And we could certainly follow up once we know which awards were made and share that with the council.
And council will always get to report from me in the aftermath, if you will, for me, that reflects who was awarded and which projects are moving forward.
Well, they're all very worthy causes, so we, anything we can do to support that, I'm anxious to do that, and look forward to hopefully getting some good news later. Thank you for your work on that. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to have, I know we have a presentation on general obligation bonds, but just to know that we're having a resolution being talked about on Mondays, and so I look forward to the discussion on our bonds.
Thank you, and I know part of it was issuing bonds to pay off more expensive bonds, right? So I know we love to do that, and we love to get a number on, we just saved X millions of dollars, so at some point, is this contingent on? We don't know yet?
Well, in the mark, in the world today, the environment of rising interest rates, that's becoming.
Yeah.
Not as, not probably as significant as it's been in the past, but certainly there's some opportunities, yes. And we'll talk about that.
Okay.
I think after we go through the agenda.
Got it. Great. Council, any other questions about Monday's agenda? All right, thank you. Next item, then, is item 2A. It's a, we'll pick up with our budget discussions. Item 2A is a presentation on the city's 2022 capital financing plan. Ryan, welcome.
Council, good to be here with you today. I'm Ryan Wimmer, City Treasurer, and I'm here to talk today about the 2022 capital financing plan for the city. I just want to note, in addition to city staff that's here to answer any questions that you have, our city's financial advisor, Janelle Gold, from Hilltop Securities, is here, as well as on the phone or online, we have the city's bond attorney, Zach Sakis, with the firm Greenberg Towrig. So they're available for questions. They help us a lot during these financings as really specialists and experts in this process. So why is there a need for capital financing? The first item is to, infrastructure to support new development. You look at all the development that's going on in the city right now, and it's, it needs infrastructure to support it. It's also important that we update existing aging infrastructure through, in the older parts of the city. It provides quality of life, public safety facilities, parks, libraries, streets, and utilities. From a process perspective, it's the funding source for the capital improvement program. You're going to hear more about that after me today. And it's also, it's equitable or fair, because as the infrastructure's being used, it's being paid for, and those who are using it, those who are benefiting from it are paying for The process for financing municipal debt is similar to most loans. The city first borrows money by selling debt to investors, and then that money's used to construct city infrastructure projects, and then lastly, the city pays back that principal, the amount borrowed, with interest for the life of the debt. And that, that payment of principal and interest to the investors is called debt service. The city issues debt with payments for up to 25 years, and typically in municipal debt, you have an option to pay off or pay off early or call the debt after 10 years. So it's not like a standard home mortgage where you can refinance at any time. You can only refinance municipal debt typically after 10 years. So there's a lockout period, they call it, before you can refinance that debt. So the new debt service that we issue each year is coordinated with the debt service we already have to make sure that our payments don't jump around, that they're stable. And the city's financial forecast includes debt service for the current debt, but also future issuances. We assume in the general fund forecast and in the utility fund forecast that you've seen that we're issuing debt every year, every year, going forward. And so what's our process in Mesa? Every year, we look for, we look at selling new debt, we look at refinancing, or it's called refunding, so I'll call it that in the presentation, but it's refinancing existing debt at lower interest rates, like Councilmember Freeman was just, and the mayor were just referring to. And so same timeframe, just lower costs, just like refinancing a mortgage, a home mortgage. And we also look at using cash that we've accumulated to fees or pay off existing debt, like we did with the spring training debt, stadium debt. And lastly, we pay off bonds that are coming due from prior issuances. Every year, we have debt from our previous issuances that we're paying off. So this year, we haven't talked about this before, but we need to talk about it this year, and that's the difference between tax-exempt and taxable city debt. So typically, most of our debt is tax-exempt. So the federal government does not tax an investor who buys our bonds if they're used for a public purpose. So it's really a tax break for the city because we don't have to, well, if you look at the second bullet, because that interest income is tax-exempt, investors are willing to earn a lower rate on that, a lower interest rate on that, on that bond, on that debt. And so the city pays a lower interest rate. So really, that tax exemption on public purpose city debt, it really benefits the city as much as anyone, because the investors earn less, the city pays less. But there, the IRS does not allow tax-exempt debt in every case, and so down below or taxable, in that taxable section, it says municipal debt that substantially supports a specific commercial purpose is not eligible to be tax-exempt. So there's some debt, if it supports a specific business, can't be tax-exempt. And if it's, if that debt is taxable, then investors require, and the city pays a slightly higher interest rate, because it's not tax-exempt. And we have the case this year that there are a couple of natural gas projects, and they're shown here on the map, that are substantially supporting a commercial purpose, and that is the CMC Steel Expansion in southeast Mesa. And you can see these projects are the Queen Creek Road Gate Station and Gas Line Extension down there on the bottom of the map with that, the gate station's on the west, and then that red line across the bottom, that's the line extension. And then the Meridian Road Gas Line Extension Project takes that line up to CMC Steel. So these projects, since they do support that expansion to a certain degree, we are proposing to issue taxable debt to finance these two projects.
Let's be clear, I mean, we would, it'd be our preference to have, to issue tax-exempt bonds, but because, and our financial advisors have suggested that because this is directly benefiting specifically in the volumes, a private enterprise in Mesa, that we will be having to issue, we won't be able to qualify under the tax-exempt law. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. Chris, that's exactly right. The IRS has certain thresholds, and if we'd like, we could hear from our bond attorney about the kind of complicated triggers that determine whether something is not tax-exempt, but that's the case, yeah.
And then in this case, Mayor Council, and I think maybe Frank and Tony can talk a little bit more about it during their presentation, but while we're having to extend this line to this location, there is a service agreement, I'm not sure what the right term is, that provides for them to pay it back over time. So I just want to be clear about that, because otherwise, yeah, we don't typically provide that, but we do have a reimbursement agreement.
Purchase agreement.
Fair for this, but we will still have to, on the front end, the city will still have to issue taxable bonds. It's just a little unusual for us, but again, even the premium on the tax, taxable bonds will be part of the cost recovery that we get from the client also, from the user. So we'll be made whole, it's just that at, on the front end, we will have to, we will do the project, we'll issue the bonds, and then we get reimbursed through payments over a period of?
It could be five to seven years.
Five to seven years, so.
So Ryan, while we're on the subject, overall, our capital improvements in the utilities, since it's an enterprise, we sell water and gas and electric, so are those bond debts? Are those taxable or non-taxable?
No, the majority is, the reason we're bringing this up is quite an exception for us. Rarely do we have to issue tax, taxable bonds for utili, well, for any city purpose, I guess I should say, but specifically in this area. But just because of the nature, you can see that we're having to bring an extensive line to get to a one, one user, that the criteria that was looked at by the financial advisor suggested that it had, it wouldn't qualify for tax-exempt. Now, at the end of the day, that premium, I call it premium, that additional cost for being taxable will be passed on to the user, and they'll, will get reimbursed for that cost. But on the front end, when the council sees, what we're telling you is we're going to be issuing bonds, and you're going to hear the word taxable on that, and that's just what we're trying to explain and share that with you today.
Especially when we're being reimbursed, it's certainly.
Yeah, so we'll be reimbursed. It's unusual, you typically, this, well, and it is, but I don't want to suggest, and it's not, it is the cost of the user to, you know, be responsible financially for this extension. Our kind of incentive to land this significant economic development project was that we would finance that cost and get reimbursed. Now, on the backside of that, where Frank and Tony are excited about, you also hook up a very large user, so that also helps the enterprise in the long term by selling a lot of gas, so.
So I understand for clarification, so our cost recovery on these taxable bonds?
Yeah.
Will pay for principal and interest through the course of?
Five to seven years.
Five to seven years. So basically, will, five to seven years, other than covering those costs, will be at a zero balance and paid off?
Well, no. Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, I believe the bonds are about, we structured the taxable debt to mature first for various reasons, but I think it's outstanding for eight or 10 years in the structure, but we'll have recovered the cost to pay that.
In less than 10 years.
Yeah, we won't, we won't defees the bonds in five to seven years, but we'll recover.
Because you have the 10-year.
Yeah, we'll recover enough cost to cover that over the full period.
Okay, just wanted to understand a little better.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we didn't really try to match that up, we just tried to make sure we recovered the costs that were going to occur. And I would say, just about these projects, that they don't just serve the CMC Steel site, they serve, you can see the neighborhood to the south, and there's, they, they do serve other areas, it's just the, because they are such a large user, the IRS regulations are pretty strict about how, what ratio of a project can support a certain business. So it's not just CMC Steel being supported, and I believe these lines were going to be built anyway, but they're being built larger, and they're being upsized basically because of the CMC Steel Expansion.
You know, I'll just point out that this economic development project in Queen Creek was front-page news. We're talking about thousands of jobs for.
Well, this is a different project.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, so we're only talking about the CMC Steel.
So the red line is not crossing Jermaine Road into Queen.
It is right up against Meridian. I think that's Meridian on the east.
Yes.
So it snugs up, this is all inside the city of Mesa.
Oh, okay.
At this point, are, we're saying we're only doing this for clients in the city of Mesa.
All right, good to know. Thank you.
And Mayor, to your point, there are several other economic development projects currently, maybe what you're referring to, just to the east of this map, and they sent me two maps, and I use this one that shows to the west, but to the east, there's the Project Alpha and Epicenter, which are both, I don't know if those are announced yet, but being considered to the east. This line would also be a part of. Okay, if there's no other questions on that, so the proposed 2022 debt issuances, and these are tax-exempt unless you see otherwise, but first of all, the general obligation bonds, so those are the Parks and Culture, Public Safety, and Transportation projects. We've got new bonds of 24 million and refunding bonds from 2012, and that's where you see that 10-year call period or refunding period. We're refinancing those older bonds that are more expensive. And then on the utility side, we've got the utility obligations of new, which are tax-exempt, of 59 million, and then that, that $16 million piece is what we've just been talking about with the taxable projects for supporting, the natural gas projects supporting CMC Steel. And then on the utility side, we're planning to refund 69 million, so issue new debt at lower interest rates and pay off the older debt at higher interest rates to achieve interest savings. Some of the utility projects, these are examples.
Excuse me, Ryan.
Yeah.
Ryan, you talked about the interest rates on the refunding mechanism. What rates are we adjusting to? What were we paying today, and what would be refunded at?
Yeah, that's a good question. So on the.
I mean, it's kind of like redoing your mortgage or anything on your home. I mean, that's what we're trying to do.
Yes, and in the general obligation side, now, we're going to talk about this in a minute, but the general obligation side, the rates have come up, well, on all the rates have come up recently because of inflation, and the Federal Reserve has started to increase rates, so the general obligation rates are very close. We were at 3% to 3.25% on our existing debt, so it was already pretty good, and we're just below that now. We're probably about 2.5% to 3%, depending on the day. And so we're going to talk about that in a minute, but we may, that may not work, that may not happen, the general obligation bonds, because we're so close on the interest rates to what we already have.
When we started the presentation, we were doing well. Every day it gets worse.
Well, and it costs money for refund.
Right, and so we take that into consideration.
Because, you know, it's not cheap to refund and then.
No, it's not. That's why we're, we're going to, we're going to tell you this is what we'd like to do, but when we get to the market and get to sell, we may, we may pull it.
Yeah.
And Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, just to tie out on the other, the utility debt, those bonds that are being refunded are at 4%, and so there's a little more, there's a little more room there, so we're thinking we'd get about 30% on the tax-exempt and about 3.5% on the taxable. So on the refunding would be 3%. So there is, there is some savings there, and we'll show you in a slide here what that estimated savings is.
Still, even historically, those rates regardless are still very favorable for us. I mean, we love half percents, but, you know, realistically, anything we can get around threes and fours right now, that's pretty good.
Okay, so here we, here's some pictures of some, and some examples of some utility systems projects. There's a full list of projects, and there's lots of them, but it's attached to this agenda item. If you look on that top right picture, it might be interesting to know, that is a gate station, a natural gas gate station, if you're wondering what that looks like. That's an example of what we were just talking about being built out in, on that Queen Creek Road project. And, sorry, one other project mentioned down there on the bottom, that Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline Project is part of this bond issuance, debt issuance. On the general obligation projects, here's a few examples there, there's a lot more as well here, but, and those are on the attached list. The one I wanted to call, we wanted to call out is the police evidence facility, and we'd like to ask the city engineer, Beth Euning, to give us an update on that project.
Hi, we just wanted to bring a couple of things up here while we're talking about that project. We originally scoped and envisioned that project in 2017. A lot of things have changed since then, and we wanted to let you know what was going on. The project currently is funded at about $11 million in the bonds that Ryan's talking about today. Today, that project is about $21 million. Couple of things have happened. One, we've changed the site location for the building. We did quite an extensive analysis on workflow and how evidence relates to the police operations. So what we found is it's better to locate it adjacent to HQ, headquarters, sorry, and police headquarters and the forensics laboratory, because those are the people that come and go with the evidence. Also centralizes it with the five evidence freezers and the four coolers that we currently have in the HQ building, the headquarters building. So that's one of the big issues, because it's a much different site than we originally thought, and we're going to a two-story building, a lot of changes. And then on top of that, since in the last four or five years, we've seen about 35% inflation in construction costs for buildings of this type. So there's two things that are kind of driving our costs on that project. We want to keep going on the project because we're seeing inflation, construction cost increases on the order of $300,000 to $500,000 per quarter. So every quarter we delay, it drives the project up more, so we're very anxious to continue. We hope to be back with some GMPs later this year, or summer, and continue forward with the construction. But the project will split funding probably across two bond issues.
Right. So thank you, Beth. So I wanted just to be very clear that while we're listing this project as far as the bond, this series of bonds to issue, it will only cover half of the cost, or about half the cost.
Eleven.
And so what that, but at the same time, you know, we are, we're really struggling, you've read this in the paper, just, project costs are just skyrocketing on us, and we're really having to do a lot of creative stopgaps to keep projects going. So the point here is, we're going to issue the general obligation bonds that were approved in 20, what year was it for the?
2018.
2018, sorry, thank you. Even though it's only half of the necessary cost, what we would like to do is move forward with this approval, and then the contract, we won't be spending down the whole $20 million, you know, immediately, and then what we'd like to do is come back to council on the proposed bond package in November, and then include the other half of the cost in that. Now, if that doesn't get approved, then we would have to find resources either in the public safety sales tax or in the general fund to cover that cost. But just the experience we're having right now with the huge escalation of costs, we just didn't want to delay this any further, as well as, it's not only just cost increases, it's just delays in getting materials and labor. So all those things, and this building needs to move ahead of the, of the police headquarters administration building being able to move forward too. So I really just wanted to let the council know that while you see this, I don't want it to represent that you, that this is the entire project. Right now, it's only about half of it, and then we'll come back with you on the revisions to the proposed bond package in November, but I just wanted to explain what we're trying to attempt to do here, so.
Mr. Freeman. I have a question. What's the picture in the lower right? What's that?
That is it.
I feel the mention, that's it.
So doesn't it even match the police building that we have currently, unless it's still going to be rehabbed? Architecture.
So these are our initial concepts, and what you're seeing there is just a part, a very small part of the building. We've got some better renderings and more renderings, but we're working on the colors still to get the blend to work, because we're still talking. It's very early in the concepts right now, we've got the kind of the mass and how it's going to look, and then we'll work to blend some of the colors.
Remember, it's storage.
It's storage.
And I did work, I, we've had, I've had conversations with them about the view, the facade out to the public, so we'll work on that, but at the same time, we can't have a lot, there's not, it's freezers and evidence, so a lot of lighting and stuff.
It's kind of drabby to me.
Oh, yeah, when you see the, we'll get the, when we bring the C Mar forward, we'll bring all the nice pictures, but.
Right.
It is a blocky building. There's not much work in do for storage. There's not much work in do for a storage building, but we will try. There's some features.
Yes.
Yeah. Speaking as someone who has an office across the street, I would care.
Did I not bring that up?
Yeah, I know. We discussed that, Mayor.
I said, there's one person that may be up here. We're working on it, Mayor.
Plus the neighborhood in that area, we'll be working with them in public meetings.
I know somebody who lives just down the street too, so I think people care what the building looks like.
Yep. We're going to try to be good neighbors.
This is just very early in the concept, so we'll, you'll see better things as we come forward with the C Mar.
Right. So I totally get the urgency of what the inflation that's happening right now. So if that's the case, why not bite off the whole enchilada instead of doing half? Is it, because?
Oh, no. What we're saying, Mayor, is we're going to do the whole project.
Right. But why not issue the bonds?
We only have enough in the bonds for the 10 million. That's always authorized.
Because it's, the inflation exceeds our budget authority.
So back when, if the election was in 2018, we probably priced this in 2017 or earlier. And we just had no idea, know that we're probably 30% higher just on that. So, no, we're proceeding forward with the project. The funding may come from two different bonds, is what we're suggesting, the 2018 bond, and hopefully a 2022 bond also.
So we won't have a half-built building?
No, we, no. We'll, we'll ask council to authorize the full amount when we bring the project to you. And, and then we'll have a contingency if we don't get the bonds that, because we'll have already issued the contract. We will, the city will have to stand up behind the 10 million somewhere in the budget. And we, we'll identify other sources that we could do. We'd prefer it to be funded by the next series of bonds in 2022.
Mr. Thompson?
Chris, are we going to have the same issue with our southeast library?
I think we've got that almost under control.
Well, we are. Right now, we just selected our contractor yesterday, so we'll know more about the numbers. And of course, contractors work very closely with architects to kind of bring those back in, but I don't have new numbers yet.
We probably will, I suspect we'll have some challenges on that one.
It will.
But we can deal with that. There is a thought that we heard yesterday in the interviews, that maybe the timing of that, because it'll really be construction in 2023, that there may be some, a little bit of pressure relief on some of the items, so we'll wait and see. So, but we did, that was the part of our big conversation yesterday with all the contractors, so. But we'll bring that up when we get closer to that time. But I'll, and I could go, we could spend a lot of time and we probably will have to. There's a lot of projects underway right now that we're struggling with as far as cost, so.
How soon with the police evidence facilities? I know you're still working in architectural or in plans and such. So is that for like next year, you think you'll start the construction?
Vice Mayor, we're actually looking to bring you the GMP this summer and start construction in the fall of this year. That's why we want to keep going as much as we can, keep the momentum up in the project. And we'll be back with final concepts, the way the building's going to look. We still have a process to get through the design review board and, and the neighborhood, so we'll be back to review the concepts with you at that time.
Okay.
We wanted to talk a little bit more about that refunding savings that we've been talking about already a little bit. So the city's financial policy has this, which has been approved by council, has this statement. To ensure that bond refundings produce anticipated savings, refunding bonds should have a net present value savings exceeding 3% of the debt service amount of the bonds being refunded. So if you just remember that 3% savings number, that's, that's the requirement in the city's financial policy. So when we look at these refundings that we're planning to do this year, these refinancings, these were estimates as of a couple of weeks ago, and the market's gone up and down since then, so they're, it's probably close, but probably not exactly the same. So we're talking about refinancing those bonds issued 10 years ago at lower interest rates today. And you can see on the general obligation bonds, the estimated savings is about 700,000. And if you look at that percentage, it's 2.9% of debt service. So it's sufficiently close to 3%. So we, if we're not at that 3% threshold, we, we won't refund or refinance those bonds. We're not planning to, because it's not meeting that 3% threshold in the city's financial policies. That really, the purpose is to say, is it really worth it to refinance something for that small of a percentage savings? It also, it also gives us, if rates come down in the future, it gives us the opportunity to refinance them later at a higher, higher savings. So although you're approving that refunding, it, it may not be executed if the savings isn't high enough. On the utility side, the, the savings is estimated to be 7.6 million, which is 7.2% of debt service. And like we talked about before, that's because the existing bonds have a higher interest rate on them, and so there's more savings there, there's more cushion between that, above that 3% threshold. So the total estimated savings, if the general obligation refunding happens, it would be 8.3 million. And if you look down below, you know, the last lot of years, we've been benefiting from these huge refunding savings. And if you look at the last five years, we've saved $68 million as a city in our, in our refundings. And so we've had these huge savings in the past. Now, rates are higher now and the savings, the numbers aren't so big, but there's, this has been very successful in prior years and, and it, there continues to be some savings.
What's the purpose for the 3% threshold? Because what's wrong with saving 700,000 dollars?
Mayor, it goes back to what Councilmember Freeman was alluding to, the cost and the effort to refinance these, the seven, the refunding costs would be quickly eaten up by a lot of that. Not all of it, but then at some point, if the savings is only a couple hundred thousand dollars, it, just the effort it takes and the risk, it's just, we, that's why we set the policy at 3%. I've been in other organizations where that threshold's even higher before they'll, they'll do a refunding. So it's just the cost of doing it. Ryan, anything else?
Yeah. Mayor Chris, I, I think that's part of it. And these costs are, or these savings are net of the costs.
Oh, okay.
I think Mike Kennington, we were talking about it, he said, you know, you only get one bite at the apple on these. So the idea is, rates could go down in two years and the savings might be 8%, you know, it might be higher. That's, that's one reason. But yeah, really, I think the idea is, well, there's, there's got to be some threshold where it's just not worth the trouble.
It may be that if you wait a couple more years, that savings could be even greater. These are just, that are up and eligible, is that the right word? Available to be refunded because of the time, of the time?
Yes, starting July 1st.
They're just up available, they're now available to be considered for refunding. That doesn't necessarily mean that you should always refund it. You might say, well, let's wait and see if the markets improve. And then even two years later, you could get a significant more savings and, you know, and take out the same bonds, so.
Okay. I mean, but if the savings is net of the expense, it still seems like it's, why not? I mean, we, we can hire, you know, a lot of guys to sit in an office and work on this for $700,000.
Yeah. Well, that's why it's right on the edge, Mayor. This one is right on the edge, so.
So just for clarity, this number, the point seven, would be net less the refunding basis points to refund those dollars?
Yes.
So what percentage point do we pay on refunding? I mean, that's really in the weeds, but...
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, I think the last time we ran the numbers, it was about, it was about 2.5%. It was, it was between, yeah, it was 2.5% on the refunding. So we're at, we're at 3 or 3.25 in the existing debt. So yeah, there is some savings. There's 600-something thousand rounds up to 700,000.
Okay. I think perhaps we could continue the conversation, you know, later, but...
3% should spin the policy in play for a while, so.
Is it kind of standard financial policy to have something? I mean, would our people that are coming in and analyzing our, our organization, that they'd say, why are you wasting so much time?
No, the 3% would be, that'd be a very standard...
Totally arbitrary, something that we said?
No, I don't, it's not my experience, at least in other situations. I've seen numbers higher than that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and I will mention, Mayor Chris, the 3% is, is pretty standard from my understanding. We do use a 3% of debt service versus 3% of principal, which actually is a little lower number that most other entities use principal. So that's kind of technical, but our threshold is a little bit high, 3% of a slightly higher base than other entities.
Well, let's see what the market, where we shake out, Mayor, and we'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
So the timeline for these transactions is that Monday, you'll consider authorizing the resolutions. This year, there's only two resolutions, one for the utility debt, one for the geo debt. In the past, you would have seen more, but we've consolidated those. So you'll see two, two items, you see two items on your Monday agenda. On May, the weeks of May 23rd to June 2nd, we'll be in the market selling these, these five transactions, if we do them all. And on June 22nd, we receive all the, the money, the actual proceeds from the sales. Thank you, Mayor. That's the presentation.
Thank you, Ryan. Vice Mayor.
I have one question related to this, and just overall capital debt, you know, bond debt. Is there a percentage that we target to say, not more than 10% of our budget would we consider to be in a healthy financial situation that we would want to have, you know, with our, our capital and, and our enterprises and everything we have going on, a percentage of that we should not go over in order to be considered to be financially healthy as far as what we totally finance for capital expenditures?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's a good question. Some jurisdictions do have policies like that where they restrict their, their ratios and they force themselves to pay, issue certain levels of debt and structure a certain way. We don't, what I, what I will say is, the state has a limit on general obligation debt. It's limited to 26% of the city's taxable value. And ours, we're less than, we're, we're about a third of that on the, on the general obligation debt limit. And on the utility side, we don't have, we don't, we, we do have coverage ratio requirements that the bondholders require. So they require that we bring in more, they require that we have extra cushion to make the debt payments. So one and a quarter times coverage, it's called. And so we're, we're above, we're about two and a half times coverage, so we're, we're about...
That's a ratio that you, that's how we kind of look at it from that perspective. It's just, that's how, that's how the rating agencies will ask the question. So, and then we look at it to, you know, on the general obligation side, really, you know, the sensitivity there is not only the state limitation, but certainly we have to consider the impact on the secondary property tax and what that looks like for the cost of a homeowner. So we, that's something we're very sensitive to. And then on the utilities, it does the same thing, right? It can, it drives, it's the, it's the dominant driver of rates today, right? But at the same time, you know, utilities are capital intensive, much more than the general fund, right? Because the plants and pipes and all the equipment, that really drives that. So we're, that's how we try to balance it out, is these ratios, but we also look at it from the perspective of, how does it impact either the secondary property tax levy or, and just, just as critically, maybe more critically, on the utility side, what future pressure will it have on rates out into the future? And that's kind of how we try to manage it and look at it over a long period of time.
And I assume that our bond rating is a reflection of our financial health, that we wouldn't have such a high, what's our bond rating again, is it?
Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mayor, Vice Mayor, the, our bond rating on our general obligation debt is triple A, which is the best rating possible.
Okay.
From one rating agency, we use two rating agencies on each, and it's double A with the other one. On our utility debt, it's, it's double A on our existing debt and single A plus on our, on our new debt.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I guess that's also a measure, you know, how we're doing, because that certainly is not...
And we're going to go through that gauntlet of meetings with rating agencies in the next couple of weeks, so we'll let you know how we're doing.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
And I brought this up during our Sustainability and Transportation Committee meeting. On the, on our climate action plan, Chris, as we start moving towards a car, a neutral carbon footprint, that means reduction in the use of our natural gas system. What, what type of downward pressure is that going to put on our ability to pay our utility revenue obligations into the future? Because the natural gas system does generate a lot of revenue for the city and our enterprise fund, right?
Well, it does proportionate as much as any other, right? It's not disproportionate. I think the good news, I'll let Freeman talk about it, I think the, the future for the natural gas enterprise is probably as bright as it's ever been, considering the number of users that he's getting ready to hook up. I mean, he could be, that could be, I don't know, I think the best days are ahead for the natural gas utility, based upon the industries that are seeking high-volume services. So, John, we just, you know, talked about the one. So actually, I think on that side, we're pretty excited about what the future is for that.
We're running three new excavators.
Three new excavators, yes. But I'm just saying, I think on the natural gas and side, we're doing well. So yeah, I think we're, we're, I think we're fine on that side. I don't, I don't know that on the, I think of that correlation so much. I think the natural gas is seen as a little bit more cleaner than, you know, carbon and using, you know, regular gas. And that's, you know, our fleet, part of our fleet program is to do the flare to fuel, right, and get credits for the natural gas. So I think we see natural gas as actually one of the strong assets for the city going forward.
I agree.
I knew you would.
I'll just say that sometimes we are, our critics will look at, point to the amount of bond debt that we have and say, look how that, this is irresponsible, you're, you're running the city on a credit card. And so presentations like this are important for, for us to educate folks, so that they know that there are, we're well within industry and legal limits with the amount of debt that we have, less, you know, compared to many other cities. And also reminding folks that we are unusually engaged in utility service in Mesa. So when, when you go apples to apples with other cities, most other cities don't, aren't as engaged in these heavy industries of providing utilities like we are, so.
And Mayor, to your point, and I've told, I've said this since the day I'm out here, one of the most significant drivers of economic development for the city of Mesa that helps us stand apart from many others is our utilities. And, and, you know, but they're very expensive, having water treatment plants, having water plants, having gas and electric. You look at the growth of Mesa just in the last three to four years, I mean, the pressure for us to continue to extend utility, despite the, the huge investment we've made, the continued pressure for us to continue to grow and expand our utilities has never been greater. But because that's, and but it's driving a tremendous amount of opportunity for us to bring enterprise and industry to Mesa. Now, we're excited now because a lot of the developers are coming in now, are finding much more economical or efficient ways to reduce their water consumption, but on the gas side, it's becoming a huge demand for us. So we're, we're very excited about that.
And as, as an advocate for the climate action plan, I don't see a disconnect with the natural gas expansion at all. I mean, I think most, we'll, we'll have our sustainability department up in a little while, but I think most advocates for the environment understand that you, you don't go, you know, you don't eliminate natural gas. Natural gas is a, is a great interim use as, you know, technology over the next few decades will advance and, you know, maybe a few decades from now, natural gas will not be a, a big deal, but for, for foreseeable future, it will be. So.
I think natural gas, though, is, as a whole, is under attack right now across the nation, across the world. I mean, you see cities in California and New York and others that are eliminating the use of natural gas in their communities altogether. And, you know, obviously, we can't do that here. The legislature put a stop to that last year or so, but, you know, it's still, to me, it's, you know, coming from that industry, it's still one of the cleanest uses that we have, so.
And I, and I'm agreeing with you, and that, that's why I made the comment that I don't see it as a disconnect to be enthusiastic and aggressive with a, a climate action plan, but at the same time, incorporate natural gas into that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is, item 2B is a presentation on utility projects included in the capital improvement program. Welcome back, Brian.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Brian Richel, Management and Budget Assistant Director, the Office of Management and Budget. So with the, with the presentation, that was... So with the, with the presentation that was presented by Ryan, the City Treasurer of bonding, all of that, what we're, what I'm gonna focus on, on is the capital improvement for the utilities for '23-'27, but really focusing on the projects that are coming up this next fiscal year. So we'll just discuss the capital improvement and then review active projects, utility projects, and then we'll go through the next steps. Just kind of as a reminder, some of the utilities funding sources, the local revenues, which is basically your, the rate revenues for the utilities themselves, but then also the utility revenue obligations that the presentation was just talking about. So we do a lot of the, the funding through those. And similar to the, the non-unilities, what we do in the forecast is we also look at the operations and maintenance, and we review that throughout the CIP project lifecycle, but then also budget to ensure that the city can maintain the operations of those facilities. For example, plant maintenance costs for expansions, also the chemical cost to treat wastewater, and any additional staff that's needed if we do expand any facilities that are needed. So we look at that, and then what we do is we take that and put that out into the forecast also, along with the, the cost of the projects and the debt associated with it. So just a highlight of some of the current projects that were finished this year. So one is the Val Vista Water Treatment Reservoir Replacement. The total cost was 4.2, that was finished this year. And then also the Lewis East Transformer Switch Replacement for the electric side, that was completed with a cost of $4.7 million. So a lot of the projects are still going on. Those are just two of the, the main projects that were finished this year. So moving on to some of the proposed utility projects, and I'm just highlighting a few of them, we have several that will be part of the, the program. But to highlight, the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, this will increase water treatment by 24 MGD, million gallons per day, and add a eight million gallon reservoir. The, the total cost of this is $145 million, but for '22-'23, and this coming up fiscal year, is, will be $9.7 million. Another one is the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline. That's been presented to you before, that'll help bring reused water down to the Gila River Indian Community. That total cost is around $100 million right now, with '22-'23 would be about $10.1 million. And then also the, we're looking at doing new groundwater wells, drilling four wells, but also doing five collection lines. And this will help with redundancy in water treatment and help meet with the demand growth, especially down in the southeast part of Mesa. So the cost of this is about $22 million for '22-'23 would be 8.5. And then on the wastewater side, we're looking to do a project at the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant, some improvements. This will help replace aging infrastructure. It's been a, it's been a few years since there's been a improvements, major improvements done to this facility. And they're also looking to do some efficiency improvements. This total cost throughout the, the program is $35 million, but for '22-'23, in the budget for this coming up year would be $7 million. And then also the Southeast Water Reclamation Plant improvements, improvements, process improvements, along with, they're looking to replace electrical and control upgrades and replacements of those. Total cost is about 8.2, next fiscal year would be about half that for $4 million. And then also looking to replace sewer line replacements, so just going through the system and replacing the aging pipes. This, we're, the program, we're looking to put $31 million, and for next fiscal year would be about $8 million. So that's on the wastewater side. Moving over to the natural gas, some of the major projects that we're looking to start this coming up fiscal year is the Gansell Road Project. It, what it'll do is put the, the new 12-inch high-pressure main, and this will help feed for commercial and residential growth, but also for redundancy of the Gans and future gate stations. This cost is roughly $28 million for next year. It's for the beginning phases of it, would be about $2.3 million in the budget. And then also the Brown, Broadway Road Improvements. This is to replace existing high and intermediate pressure gas mains to improve system reliability. Estimates are about 3.7 for the project and about 2.3 for next fiscal year. And then also looking to add new gas lines just throughout the residential and commercial developments to, and because of, due to the growth of the southeast and also the magma district in residential and commercial. So we're roughly putting $12 million into the program, but for next fiscal year, we're budgeting $4 million. On the electric side, we're looking to, for that, we're looking to do the Police Department Campus Microgrid. I know Frank, the Energy Resources Director, has briefed Council on that, but I will probably, is here for any more questions on that. What is to do is to install electric generators, communications and electric switching to generate power for the electric utility, but also provide backup power in instances of outages for that campus and any other buildings on that campus. So the cost is around $9 million in the program, so this coming up fiscal year, we're looking to put $7 million into the budget for this project. The other one is the, for Smart Cities, it's a 69 KV looping system. And what this is to do is, there's two KV line transmission lines throughout the system, that loop, and what's considered an open-loop scheme. What this is to do is to make it a closed-loop scheme for reliability and redundancy of the system. So for instance, if there is an outage, what will happen is just that local isolated area will only have the outage while they fix it, while everyone else will have, still should have electric. And then also what's in the program is for new electrical services. So this is primarily due, as we know, is the growth of commercial developments in the electric service area. So with the new electrical service, we're looking at $10.8 million in the total program. And for the budget this coming up year is to the beginning, the starting, or beginning of it, sorry, of '22-'23 would be about $1.1 million. So that's kind of just a quick overview of the utility CIPs, the major ones that are in the budget for fiscal year '22-'23, and some of what the costs would be in the, in the budget. So next steps for the utility CIP, on April 30th, with public notice, proposed fiscal year '23 through '27, capital improvement would be posted. And then on May 16th, a public hearing and council consideration for the capital improvement program would go in front of council. Now, that's kind of a brief overview, but it's kind of a, some of the project, major projects that are going on for the utilities. And I know Ryan, the City Treasurer, kind of briefed you on some of those, I will be bonded coming up.
All right, Brian, I think you saw, we've got some anxious council members to run some questions by. Should we start with the Vice Mayor?
Sure. On the water, new groundwater wells, can I have a little more information on why we're drilling them, how the water's being used? Is there any regulating authority about taking water out of the ground versus our canal system?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, so right now, we have about 10 wells in different stages of activity. So the new, well, I'll start with the new wells. So in southeast Mesa, our well field serves as a backup supply to our service water. And in the summer, it helps with peaking, so we need to grow our well field in southeast Mesa just to keep up with, with growth and economic activity. So we have four new wells that are in design right now for drilling, and then we have six other wells, more in this part of town, that are 50 years old, they have holes in the casing, they're just beyond their useful life, so we're re-drilling those. And then we're about to submit a design request for four new wells for the next round of new wells in southeast Mesa. So we're going into a very active period of time for wells. The last decade or so was really a lot of attention on plan expansion and transmission mains, and the wells largely did not have a lot of investment, but now we're going into a point where we have to catch up with that investment. So it's more for, it's more for supply to answer, hopefully I'm answering your question.
And Chris, so you, we count it as one of our key components to our water portfolio. It's, you know, totally rely on it, but it, but it has a role in our water portfolio, whether it's, you know, wells or surface from the different watersheds, this is an important part of that portfolio.
Right, right. So on that point, we're in a very enviable and unique position where we have over half a million long-term storage credits. We've built up over a long period of time by recharging into the GRUSP recharge basins. So with that amount of long-term storage credits, we need the well capacity to be able to pull that out for whatever period of time where we need to supplement our service water.
So to what extent are we pulling it out? I know it's in our portfolio, but I mean, between CAP and SRP, that's Plan A and A1, right?
Well, and, but the wells are right there, right? Because if we're not.
How much of the total is groundwater in our, in what we're normal, using?
But as far as a total, it's not significant relative to the other two, right, Chris? What's the?
In terms of groundwater pumping?
Well, yeah.
We prefer to not pump groundwater at all, but the fact is, we need to pump groundwater in the summer just for peak. Peak demand goes up so high, it's more than a factor of two versus in the winter time. And then for recovery in credits, I would say our total, the total groundwater pumping we do is, is in the 10% to 20% range, if you want to look at 80% to 90% of our water is supplied through surface water and water treatment, and then a small percentage is through wells.
And there, is it MR? There is a regula.
ADWR.
That regulates.
That regulates.
Right, right, exactly. So that's part of our assured water supply. There's a certain allocation we get for groundwater pumping any given year as part of our 100-year assured water supply.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but you're, you're kind of talking about two different animals. I mean, you can't tap the GRUSP water supply right now, you don't have any wells, right, Brian? I mean, there's no wells in the GRUSP system to take and tap that water. So I think as, as a city, we should look at getting some well sites up in that northern area for the GRUSP. But then, when you talk about water credits, the water credits are important for our portfolio, but yet we have to exchange some of those credits with some of the other water suppliers, whether it's CAP or SRP. I know Brian, Brian was anxious to come up here.
Could you tell?
Yeah, you were standing up.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Council. As part of, Chris had mentioned our designation of assured water supply, and a portion of that is our groundwater, so they give us an allocation of groundwater, and we have to prove that it's physically and legally available to us. And so we've done that through hydrologic studies. And so we have the water, it's the ancient water that has accumulated over thousands of years. Chris also mentioned GRUSP, and that's water we recharge into the aquifer up at, you know, North Mesa. And to your point, Councilmember Freeman, all our wells are permitted as recovery wells, and we're able to, on paper, we're pumping those recharge credits.
Okay.
We do have just a handful of wells that are in the area of impact of where that recharge occurs. And so Mesa has been in recent contact with SRP about sharing some of their new wells that they put in North Mesa, allowing us to jointly use those wells and possibly pump that into our distribution system, and we would be recovering those credits from the area of impact.
Okay, thanks for the explanation.
Yeah.
Other questions? Mr. Thompson?
I like this, the microgrid for the PD campus, and especially the, the use of, you know, having it as a backup in case of power failures. But I'm also interested in the peak shaving. And when you look just at the peaks, peak shaving, do we know what our ROI is on this? You know, because right now, we have to go out and purchase that power on the market. What is, do you know, happen to know what our ROI is?
They've looked at it, yeah. It's based on recent experience.
Right, I mean, because this kind of goes back to the conversation we had a couple of months ago, right, about how our power, our energy costs went, went up like 300%. And so this is really, really kind of a cool, cool project.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, so, you know, we view this as, the, the city has plenty of backup generators around the, the city, but this will be kind of the only one that really pays for itself, like you're seeing through offsetting peak energy purchases. And we look at it on an annual basis, forecasted out five to 10 years with multiple scenarios. And in almost all those scenarios, it's able to run about 5,000 hours a year, maybe a little less, maybe a little more, depending on gas prices in the electric market. So as it sits right now, we'll, we see it as being able to run about 5,000 hours, and during those 5,000 hours, being able to pay off its, both its capital cost and its maintenance cost. So it's a net benefit to our electric customers.
And we would be using debt to fund this, so it spreads the cost over the period of time, and the benefits of all those customers over there is benefit from the installation. And we're looking at other types of generation technologies as well. Councilmember Freeman and I have had a lot of conversations about what some of SRP's plans are and how it melds and integrates with what we're talking about. It's also important to note that with, with the amount of solar that we're starting to bring into our resource mix over time, we need this type of internal generation to firm up, if you will, those types of resources that are intermittent, that may be there one minute, but may not be there the next, but the demand is still there, and we need to, to serve that demand. These are the types of units that can start up very, very quickly, serve that load reliably and efficiently, and keep our rates affordable with that peak shaving tool.
And this kind of goes back to the previous presentation, so we're gonna issue the debt, which is typically a 10-year debt, but our ROI is gonna be five to seven years based off of savings, saving calculations.
I believe the term of most of our debt is 20 years or more.
Or 20 years, yeah.
It may be a little bit different with this taxable issuance for that particular purpose, but most of our debt that we use to fund our utility infrastructure inside our system is 20 or more years.
Yeah, I don't think we're, I don't think we're proposing to change that in the issuance for the taxable debt, are we? The 20-year term? Or is it pretty consistent with everything else when we issue taxable debt?
Mayor, councilmembers, the, the, this taxable debt issuance is an exception. Our utility debt right now, we're issuing at 24 years. And the, the reason we issued the taxable debt short was that, so it was that whole 10-year call thing, you pay for that. And so in order to not have to pay for it on the taxable and the tax exempt issuances, we separated them, so we had one, the taxable would be short and the tax exempt be long. But really.
Well, also, we know we're getting reimbursed on the taxable side, too.
Right, so we didn't care, we don't care about, for that reason.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, so really, all our utility debt is 24 years, except this one.
Because it's getting reimbursed, we're getting paid back, so.
Mr. Reddy?
On this microgrid, have we, has the federal government issued any guidance on any other infrastructure funding out there? Would this be something, an innovation as far as how we can expand our, our system here?
I don't know, I don't know that we specifically look at this project, but we certainly can. I know Mr. Butler's been aware of this, but we can follow up to see. I don't, didn't, I haven't run across anything specific to this kind of project, but, Frank, are you or something?
Yeah, we, we, we were looking into a grant that goes through the State Department of Emergency Management, and unfortunately, the bureaucratic hoops that you have to jump through were inconsistent with being able to develop a project like this. So we're looking, this is kind of a pilot project, we want to develop the microgrid here, we want to develop the microgrid for the Mesa Arts Center where the chilled water systems, chillers are at, so there's not enough emergency generation, backup generation for that system to operate in the event of a system-wide outage. So that's an important next project. So we are looking for ways to find alternative sources of funding rather than just issuing debt and having that debt service burden our customers. So grants, loan programs, that kind of stuff, we're continuously searching for those. Right now, we're trying to get this thing designed and planned for and integrated with the PD work that's going on there with the remodeling and the, and the work that's going on at MG. So that's our focus right now. Once we get a little bit further along into that, we're gonna really start being aggressively looking at grant programs. We've also got a couple of consultants that are out looking for grant programs as well.
But maybe not under the infrastructure package, but maybe there's something else.
All right, perfect. And then a question outside of this topic, but on the water treatment plan, is that our, our cost, I know we share costs with other cities, but is that totally Mesa's cost?
If you would, if it were, if it were greenfield, that is our. If you would, if it were, if it were Greenfield, that is our regional partner.
Is that the Greenfield?
This is Signal View, so it's all ours.
That's just our Mesa, okay, perfect.
And I guess that's really a wastewater plant, the Greenfield plant is, so. Thank you.
I have a question on the water again, but I think this is important, the Central Mesa reuse pipeline. I think three years ago, we talked about kind of starting this project, and I think the cost was estimated 60, 70 million, and then we kind of, two years ago, like 80 million, and now we're up at 100 million?
You don't want to ask tomorrow either, because it'll
Well, that's what I'm getting at. I think the urgency is to complete these
And we're, yeah, talk about where we're at. That's where we're at on the project.
But then, let me just end with this, too. This is an assured water supply to add to our portfolio when we get it down to the grick. And this is very, very important for our sustainable water supply in our city. And this is something, you know, we have a contract with them, but we're not able to really execute the full potential of that contract.
Well, and they're not ready to receive it either. So it's, both of us are having to get ready, so.
But what you didn't say is, is, you know, when this pipeline would be completed.
Sure, go ahead, Chris.
So
Okay, I'll address the cost question first. So Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, when we were in the middle of the alignment study a couple of years ago, we started with some conceptual cost studies. And I remember the pipe, so the pipeline itself was about 72 million, if I remember correctly, and then there was another 10-plus million for the treatment plan, the pumping array improvements that we would have to do to make this pipeline work. So we are, we are always in the 80 to 90 million range. So it has gone up. It's closer, as Brian said, it's closer to 100 million right now, is our best estimate with inflation. And in terms of completion, we're looking at February of 2025.
Okay.
So Mayor and Council, with that, we also do have, there is a return on investment with this project that helps us in the utility fund to where we do have that forecasted out. Roughly right now, with the numbers, they could change depending on when it goes, is about $200,000 in '25, '26 of savings. And then it doubles each year. So then we have the following year, it's $400,000.
It has a direct ROI.
So there is a direct ROI to this project, which helps it.
Yeah.
Over the life of the agreement with the tribe, or?
Yeah, well, that's 100 years, but just taking this debt service and applying the cost of, I guess it's the savings that we get from this water supply versus others. The differential between what we'll pay for this versus what we pay for other water is significant.
Right. It's about a third to a quarter per acre foot, the cost of this water. It's high priority water, which is, of course, good. But then, when we make our cap order every October, we front load the order with the cheaper water. And the more we deliver to the Healer River community, the more we have in our portfolio to front load.
Okay, thank you. Julie?
So can you just help me understand, or remind me, all of these are new projects? Like, none of them have been started, or some of them have already been started? When you have the total cost, but then the amount that's next year, is it, do you have like a schedule of, you know, when the rest of it's going to be paid off and all that?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, the, some of them are underway in design or feasibility study, things like that. So we do have them structured out, and we do have a schedule that I can get from engineering on kind of the schedule of when these will, will go into or be completed. But right now, most of these are, some of them are designed for next year, some of them are brand new, but some of them have been designed and will be starting construction costs coming up in this coming year.
So we have a five-year CIP, so you could go into there. And what we're doing is, we're taking, here's the five-year program, but we're telling you, next year, here's the financial impact of the, of that first-year CIP, the costs could hit us. But it'll show all these projects showing the different dollar amounts they may need clear out for the next five years.
And the cost is just related to where they're at, what stage they're at?
Yeah, whether it's designing phase.
The cost for next, yeah. The cost for next fiscal year is just where they're at right now, how much we would need to budget in next year's budget to be able to complete the tasks that they're doing now. The total cost I provided was just to give you a sense of the total cost of the project.
So, for example, like this central reuse pipeline, so if that's 100 million total, and it's only 10 million extra, then 90 million would be in the next four years after that?
Or maybe less, depending on how, yes. Krista said it would be done in 2025. So we, when you see the CIP, when we get the CIP, we'll show you what, you know, there's a first-year number, and that's the one, because it's in front of council, you have to authorize that. But we also show you, you know, the subsequent years and the project cost for that out five years. Now, they don't all take five years to do, but they may have different costs starting at different times.
So, since I wasn't here, like, four years ago, when you were doing this presentation, with the projects that you were talking about then, that you'd still be paying off, are those don't show up in a presentation like this, but they're just still part of it?
They're in a document that we share with you, that you can, we can get to.
Of what we're still, like, paying off. But then, these are just all the newer ones.
Newer, or some of these might have been in that CIP, and now we're just finally getting to them.
I'm just trying to figure out how that all works.
Yeah, we'll get you, when we get a copy of a CIP, we can show that to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. This is not a question, but we were talking about the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant, and that it's time to go back, and, you know, it's been a few years, time to upgrade things. And I've had the chance to go by there a few times the last few months, looking at the ASU algae project and other things. And it just kind of reminded me of the obvious, which is that the, I'm curious to talk with someone, not now, but later, about the, the use of that, that percolation pond, you know, north of the water reclamation plant. It's such a high-profile piece of property for our city. It's literally at the intersection of the 101 and the 202. And it just always seems like this unused remnant that has potential. Now, I don't think it has any commercial potential, because how do you build an off-ramp from an off-ramp?
Pretty difficult access, yeah.
But I think it's still, I mean, if we're spending tens of millions of dollars across the highway, I think there already are, there's some access. We already have pipes going from one side to the other. So I'd be curious to just, as long as we're redesigning that area, let's think about, do we want to do a algae pond? Do we want to do solar panels? Is there some, some useful purpose for that piece of property that's so prominent that we all drive by multiple times a week, if not multiple times a day? So
We can have that conversation, Mayor.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next on our agenda, item 2C is a presentation on the Water Resources Department budget.
So I feel like I'm already warmed up. I like that. So I'm here today with Seth Weld, our Deputy Director, and it's our pleasure to talk about our budget for fiscal year '22, '23. And with that, we'll start with our purpose, which is to provide superior water and wastewater services to our community. And our strategy for doing this is to focus on services that focus on reliability, safety, and sustainability, amongst others. And with that, we first like to talk, before we get into numbers, talk about five of our performance metrics. This first one needs a little bit of explanation, because it's a weird number, .026. So let me just first explain how we get there, so bear with me. So what this metric measures is the number of main breaks we have any given month that put one or more customers out of service for four hours or greater. So that's the category. And you divide that number by the number of customer connections you have in the thousands. So for us, we have about 150,000 customer connections, so we're dividing the number of events by 150. So hopefully, you're with me so far. So to make it easy, three events in one month, that's our target, and that equates to .02. So we use that as the target. For the month of March, we had one more than that. We had a very active main break month in March, so we had .026. So we popped above that line slightly. Now, if we had done this presentation in any of the eight prior months, it would be a different color, and we'd say we met or surpassed that goal. But we happen to have a pretty active March. But I will add, for this metric, we're very, very aggressive with the three, the three events per month. For a city our size, the expectation would be, we'd be up closer to 10. So three would be more in line with the city that might only have 75,000 or 100,000 people, where a 500,000-person city. So we want to be aggressive, because it's a reflection of our maintenance program. So that's just a little explanation on that one. Moving to the next metric.
I'm sorry, before you do that.
On the metrics, on the performance measures, why don't we have like an annual or year-to-date, or why, why do we look at it just as a month, because?
That has been discussed. We need to start showing these on an annual basis, or a rolling 12-month period. We can do that, as opposed to just snapping off one month. That's a very good point. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So noted, we noticed that right before we came, but we will probably make those adjustments in the future, because any one month probably could be a variation. But if you look over a longer period of time, like Krista said, we're actually doing very well.
Right. Yeah, that's correct. So you can, you can look at the trend. I mean, you can look at how we perform over time. But as we report here today, we're giving you a snapshot for a smaller period, like a month. The next metric we want to look at is system water loss. So what we're measuring here is the total water that we're taking into the treatment plants, and we're pumping from wells. So it's where we're starting with. And then, we're comparing that to all of our billed water. So that difference is our lost and unaccounted-for water. And that happens through events like leaks, main breaks, and it can even be non-apparent losses, just like meters that are underreporting. So all of that added up together translates into our water loss. We usually hover around 5% water loss. There's, you can see an erratic pattern in the last couple of months on the graph. And that's explained by, we're changing methodologies. We're going to a new AWWA methodology called M36. It's a little bit more intensive. We had a lot of training with it, but in the last couple of months, we've had to do a lot of manual switchover, and that's just, it's causing a little bit of erraticism in the graph. When we do get back on track with this new methodology, we expect to be 4% to 5% water loss. But one good news point is that, once we complete the smart water program, we're going to have that whole population of water meters that are changed over to brand-new water meters. So we'll have a lot of the older meters, which are underreporting, now brand-new meters that are more accurate. So we expect our water loss to go probably into 3%, 3% to 4% range. And then, one final note, what's acceptable industry-wide and for this category is 10%. We never want to be above 10%. That's a lot of water loss, and that translates into an economic hit. So being at 5% or less is really our target.
Chris, excuse me. Since you brought it up, the smart meters, where are we on that project as far as installing smart meters?
We, so we are in Phase 1. And Phase 1 is really just, it's like a pilot. It's taking a small population of water, gas, and electric meters, about 2,000 total. And it's really making sure that the connectivity is there, so that not only do you have a new meter with a radio transmitter, but then the signal is properly going through a base station communication network, it's getting into our system, it's clean information, it's accepted by our billing system, and then at the end of the day, we put out a good, accurate, timely bill. So we wanted to have a year program where we make sure that the whole ecosystem works well. We're in the middle of that right now. We have meters on order, so sometime this summer, we'll install those first couple thousand meters. The base stations, that construction is in progress. We're starting with about half a dozen base stations. Once we're successful with that, about this same time next year, we'll start the whole city, full deployment, and that'll take three, maybe four years.
All right, thank you.
The third metric has to do with beneficial use of water. Of course, we want to make 100% beneficial use of, in particular, this is reclaimed water or effluent. So we weren't 100%. We were about as close as you can get, 98.8%. And how that would be explained is probably one to two days of the GUSP recharge basins being out of service, and we'd have to divert out to the Salt River. So it'd be a short period where we had to do that. I'm happy with this number. It's very close to 100%. When we do have the reuse pipeline in place, that'll give us more redundancy where we're delivering that water to the Healer River community. And then, on some occasions, we can also recharge to GUSP, but we'll have very little occasions where we're forced to waste water to the Salt River. So that's going to be another big benefit to that project. Going to our fourth measure, I've talked about this one here in this setting before. This is sanitary sewer overflows. So for a system our size, what would be industry acceptable for a threshold would be 17 to 18 sewer overflows per year. Our system, historically, we're fortunate, we have a good maintenance program, we're much lower than that number. So we decided to set our threshold at two events per quarter, which translates into eight per year, which would be less than half of the expectation for our city. So far this quarter, we're young into the quarter, but we have zero. But you can see over history, we do a pretty good job at staying below the threshold. And our final performance measure to talk about today is nitrogen removal at the Greenfield Reclamation Plant. The reason that's important is nitrogen compounds like ammonia and nitrates, they're very harmful to aquatic life. So our effluent could come, come in contact with aquatic life and cause damage if it's high in nitrate concentration or ammonia concentration. So the state regulatory limit is 10 milligrams per liter. There's an alert level of 8 milligrams per liter. You can see, since the Greenfield expansion was completed, we're doing real well, we're trending down. There was one point during the expansion when we were, we were bringing our new aeration basins online. And those are important, because that's where the microorganisms live that consume the nitrogen. We popped right above the alert limit, nowhere near the regulatory limit, but that was during construction and during that transition. But since construction's been complete, we're heading in the right direction. Now, so we're going to get in, oh, sure, sorry.
While we're talking about wastewater, I know we did the pilot program. We were just at ASU Polytech, and they talked about the algae program, and that removes, it takes the gases, and they convert it into a biofuel or other usable sources. So we're, have we completed that pilot program at the Northwest?
Oh, with the algae?
With the algae?
I don't know.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor. So they've concluded their research for that program, for that particular grant-funded program. So now they've compiled the data, and they're doing all the reporting, but they're, they're done, they're done with that phase of it. We haven't seen a final report on the data, but it was a successful pilot. And so what it does is that it takes the biogas, which is heavy in CO2, it's heavy in methane, and they use these membranes, which filter out the CO2 and direct it into the, to the eraseways where the algae grows, because the algae uses the CO2 as food, food and sunlight and other nutrients. And then, once you grow that algae, it grows really fast. Then, there's a number of things you can do with it. You can squeeze out the lipids and make biodiesel, you can dry it out, and you can use it in the pharmaceutical industry. You can use it as food, even in our own wastewater treatment plant, food for the microorganisms. So there's a lot of end products that you can do with it. That was, so that was their study, but they're wrapping it up to your question.
Is there any next steps identified? And is that a model that can be used?
They're interested.
For our operations?
Right, sorry to cut you off. We're in conversation with them. They're very interested. They were, they were hopeful with the results of this pilot, and they would like to take it to the next level and, and look at other opportunities. So we had a, actually, a Teams call or a Zoom call the other day with ASU, one of their folks at Polytechnic, about future opportunities.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we're going to get into the numbers now, and Seth is going to take this first slide, and we're going to talk about budget requests tied to our CIP program.
Good morning. As we've talked about, as Brian mentioned in his presentation, not only do we plan the projects and estimate the completion and the timeframe that we needed, but we also need to project the operational maintenance support that goes with each of these projects. So as some of these projects are beginning to kick off and/or come online, we've got some additional positions that we need to bring on. With the Signal View Water Treatment Plant expansion, we need to add another treatment process specialist. Right now, we have one on staff that is currently shared between Brown Road and Signal View. But with the expansion of the Signal View plant, one person would not be able to dedicate enough time to adequately watch that treatment process. These are the guys who really dial in that treatment process and maximize that efficiency of the operation of that plant. For the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, we're looking to add a couple of more field coordinators to the two that we already have on staff. The two today struggle to maintain and keep up with the workload that we have. They are frequently working overtime, working, you know, extended weeks, and that just isn't sustainable going into some of these large sustainable going into some of these larger projects that we've got coming up. So those positions, we'll work closely with the design and the construction teams through that design and construction process to identify challenges where we may be crossing major utilities, where we may have some conflicts. Those guys also complete the inspections on the work that is completed. By having them on staff and doing that inspection, we're able to identify, you know, potential issues that we can resolve while the project is still active. That way, once project closes, we don't come back later and reopen it. Along with that, we're looking to add a crew leader, an equipment operator, and a field worker and the associated equipment that they'll need. Their primary responsibility will be to maintain this entire reclaimed pipeline. Today, we have 28 miles of pipeline. We're adding another roughly 11 miles. Along with the addition of the distance, we're adding 17 pumps, additional air release valves, control valves, and there's four pumping stations along the route of that pipeline. We want to get these guys involved in the beginning so that they can become really intimately familiar with that entire infrastructure because it is so critical to our future on the water supply. The Northwest Water Reclamation Plant process improvements, we are adding additional assets on things like our headworks, our grip removal system, a new methanol feed system. Along with that, it brings additional man-hours to maintain that equipment. So we need to add another maintenance specialist to properly maintain that equipment. Along with those new systems, we need an additional operator. They're the ones that go around and check the operation of all of this equipment. Therefore, there are additional daily checks that are going to need to be performed to maintain the optimum efficiency.
Okay, I'm going to get into three specific operating budget requests and then Seth is going to finish up with some high-level summary tables. Our first request has to do with reclassification of a chemist. So as a refresher, our chemists take all of the field samples, the required regulatory field samples, and they do the laboratory testing to verify the constituents in those samples. We have lived for a long time with four chemists, going back more than 25 years. And we were able to hold four chemists for a long time because of automation and advances in technology. So we could do more with a smaller number of people. But then we got to a point a decade or so ago where we needed to bring on at least a temporary part-time chemist, and we've been operating like that for quite a while. And then we got to the point where, well, we outgrew that, so now we use an outside third-party lab to make up the difference, the excess in laboratory testing. So now we're at the point where for a very small incremental number, less than $10,000, we can bring home some of that outside laboratory testing and then just convert the half-time chemist to a full-time chemist, bringing our total to five. At the Greenfield Reclamation Plant, as you know, we've recently expanded that plant. And through the life of the construction, in 2017, we added a maintenance technician. And then again, in 2019, towards the end of the expansion, we added a maintenance technician. But part of that project was working with our consultant to use a new work order system. And we've added thousands of new assets with the expansion and then have also loaded into that work order system all of our existing assets. And then now, over time, and having some, some time under our belt using that work order system, we found that we have an inordinate percentage of reactive work orders versus preventative work orders. It should be flipped the other way around. We want to be taking care of preventative work orders with a smaller percentage of reactive. So we're flipped. And with that, to get that back in balance, we need two new maintenance workers so that we can tip the balance and then we could focus more on the preventative and have that correct ratio. And finally, our third request has to do with the valve truck. It's the same theme we've been talking about, it's system growth and expansion. We've had four valve trucks going back over 10 years now, so quite a while. And just through sheer system growth, trying to keep the maintenance program strong and stay with those strong performance metrics, we finally reached a point in time where we need a valve truck. And so the valve truck is not just used for maintenance, but anytime there's a main break, the valve truck has to get out there and it has to close valves to isolate that, to stop the water from gushing out of wherever we had the break, so our crews can get in there and make that fix. As well as anytime a developer has finished their project and they're ready to tie into our system, we need the valve truck and a crew to do test shutdowns and then the actual shutdown so that we can isolate that part of the system so that the developer can quickly tie in and then we can put that part of the system back in service. So that's our third request. And then now we want to bring this home and tie it all together with some high-level summaries.
So this, I'm sorry.
Just backing up, looking at the slides, I noticed on the bottom of each slide prior to this final one where we had the summary, is how it ties into, I assume, our climate action plan? Or where is this, on the very bottom of the green area? Or is just the data, our data system?
That ties into our core business processes, so part of our performance metric reporting.
Okay.
So it just, it ties into specific metric?
Correct.
Performance measures?
So you're just trying to say, Chris was saying, this helps us to do a better job of performing at the results of some kind of measurement of, that they track, that's where you would go find that link. If council wanted to go find that dashboard, I'm assuming that's where it takes it to.
Correct.
It's just a link to that dashboard.
Okay, thank you.
But you're also right about the, so that very bottom footnote with the leaf, that does relate to the climate action.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so here we show our performance results in fiscal year 2021, where we did in the year with $83 million in expenditures. That did come in under our adopted budget, which is good news. Our 2122 budget is, was set at 100.7 million, and we are estimating that we will complete the year under budget at around 97.2 million. This has been quite an accomplishment considering that over the course of the last year, we have operated with as many as 50 vacant positions. And we're getting hit hard with all of the price increases for goods and services. So our staff has done a phenomenal job at maintaining the expenditures considering all of the challenges.
Bill, Seth, I think I want to side, some of the savings has come because of vacancies, but the vacancies have created a problem for us operationally. So we're having to, I guess, in some ways, it's going to have savings, but not necessarily because you're losing positions. So we've, you're going to, we're going to be much more aggressive and we've made some changes with Chris's leadership on trying to make sure we retain and recruit more staff because we can't operate these plants 24/7 with just one or two people, so.
Right, I was going to touch on that. Due to the vacancies, no, that's, you're good. We were faced with needing to make some wage adjustments to try to retain the existing staff. We lost a lot of staff to the private sector that was ramping up and they do similar work, primarily intel. And we just couldn't be competitive to retain those folks and additionally to recruit new staff. So we were kind of pushed into a situation where we had to look at that and make those adjustments. It's been successful. I can tell you, as of yesterday, we're down to 24 active recruitments. We haven't seen a number that low in two-plus years. So it's been very successful. Our 2223 proposed budget is set at 107.6 million. This does include all 10 of the new positions that we discussed earlier in the presentation, as well as the adjustment of the chemist position to a full-time. Included in that is a 5.17% adjustment to the baseline budget to help offset the inflation. And it is accounting for all of those one-time costs that we will have. On the next slide, I'll show you some of the bigger adjustments that we've been challenged with so you can get an idea where those challenges lie. These are some of our bigger items in our budget. Again, our partners in the Val Vista Joint Venture Plant and the 91st Avenue Wastewater Plant, they're experiencing the same cost pressures that we are. They have had to make adjustments to retain and recruit employees, as well as the added costs on goods and services and commodities. So at Val Vista, unfortunately, we're looking at about a $1.1 million increase over last year. Our water chemicals, the water quality coming into our water treatment plants remains good. The forecast for the next year is saying that it should remain that way. So we believe that we will actually, even though we're seeing cost increases, that we will actually use a little bit less chemicals, so we see a little bit of a reduction. On the water electric, it's going up slightly. We know we're facing rate increases from both SRP and the city side, but we've taken a look at our pumping strategy and we're going to make a change to our pumping strategy and we will maximize those off-peak rates. So it minimizes the impact. Obviously, the big item in our budget is the water purchases. As of when we calculated these numbers, we're looking at a $1.18 million increase. The biggest portion of that is the CAP side. That is based on the current Tier 1 shortage situation. So if cap begins to increase those shortages, those rates will continue to go up. And so we keep a real close eye on that one. The 91st Avenue Plant, again, they're facing the same cost pressures. We're seeing a slight increase out there. Fortunately there, we have five partners to share that pain, whereas Val Vista, there's only two of us. The wastewater chemicals, we have seen the cost increases are really hitting as hard on this side. The inbound flow on the wastewater side, the flows are a little more difficult for us to treat. So we're using additional chemical coupled with the cost increase, so we need some additional money. Because of some of the efficiency improvement projects at our wastewater plants, we actually are going to be able to reduce our electric budget slightly. So that's the good news. The large number on the Greenfield Plant, that is primarily driven by that in the current fiscal year, we had a lot of one-time dollar funding to complete some rehabilitation and replacements. We don't have that in the 2223 fiscal year. So that is what we have. If you have any questions?
Any additional questions? Vice Mayor.
Since water is such a big subject for us, living in the desert, what is our assured water supply as far as our portfolio or our, you know, projections as a city that we can say, we're great? I don't know if we do it as a city, you know, we're good for 10 years, we're good for 20 years.
We have to say 100.
We have to say 100? We have a plan for 100 years?
Yeah, that's our requirement for us to be able to issue permits.
Okay.
And so, yeah, that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, my takeaway from this is it's good to be a water treatment engineer right now, all right? It's interesting that you're excited that you only have 24 openings and we're adding 10 more. So I'm glad that that doesn't bother you. To me, that seems like a lot of openings. And if you know, if you've got a nephew in, you know, Missouri that's a water treatment engineer, call him.
Water treatment operators, right?
Absolutely.
Water treatment operators, if you know somebody, send them our way.
The entire valley is really struggling. We're all competing for the same talent pool, especially for the operator tubes. So there is a lot of opportunity in the valley.
Seth or Chris, talk a little bit about, aren't we, aren't we using kind of a journeyman internship program also to kind of start out early in their careers?
We are. We implemented a intern program probably five or six years ago. And so we are essentially building our own. It's been a very successful program, almost too successful. We've actually had a few people that we spent the time, trained them, groomed them, and they quickly got snatched up by another city. So, you know, it's a good thing. We look at it as a good thing. But to really fill the bulk of those vacant positions that we had over the last year and a half, it came through our intern program. I know some of you have done a tour out there. I think you guys probably encountered Adam at the Signal View Plant. Adam is one of our big success stories. He came on through the intern program, he has worked his way up, and he is the lone treatment process specialist for both plants.
Seth, where do they get their, where are they getting their certification, their schooling? Is that coming out of which community, are we working at a community college or what?
We do have a partnership with Maricopa Community Colleges. They've got a water environmental technology, I think, program. So we do try to recruit from that. We wish we got a few more out of that program, but we actually get people who have recently graduated with some kind of environmental-related degree, and they actually become interested in getting into this. So it's really quite an interesting mix of folks that we do attract.
Could we work with EBIT perhaps with the, in conjunction with the rest of these Valley cities to see if they can start up an operation technician-type?
Sure. There's going to be, with all the semiconductor plants coming on, there's going to be, that's a career path.
And you look at water in general in Arizona, you know, everybody's going to need operators. And, you know, if there's an opportunity to take those folks that don't want to go to college, but otherwise want to learn a skill, I mean, this is an amazing program that they could stand up that would help all the East Valley cities and probably West Valley as well.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
We're making progress. We still have the Energy Resources Department. Is everybody okay? Need a quick break?
Want to stand up for a second?
Why don't we reconvene it? Let's go ahead. And let's meet back here at 9:25. Let's take, stretch our legs and come, we'll reconvene at 9:25. Thank you. All right, I think we're ready to get rolling again. Gentlemen, thank you. The next item on our agenda, item 2B, is a presentation on Energy Resources Department budget. Gentlemen, take it away.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. With me today is Tony Kudorn, who is our Energy Resources Program Manager. To my right is John Petroff, our Senior Fiscal Analyst. And to his right is Kyle Nicholson, who's our Electric Systems Superintendent. Some new faces. We've had some retirements in the last couple of years through COVID, so. And we also have in the audience Keith Korch, who can help me answer any gas-type questions that come up. And Rich Manzo, who's our CIP Manager, and he can handle any questions that John and I can't handle on CIP-related projects. So with that, I'm Frank McCray. I'm the Energy Resources Director, and I think y'all know that we've owned our gas and electric utilities since 1917. So our 131 employees in our department really strive to provide superior electric and gas utility services. And when we, when we say superior, what we're meaning is very high levels of safety, reliability, and affordability. Affordability has really become a critical issue. We serve about 17,500 electric customers now. It's growing, of course. And we also serve 17,200 gas customers throughout the City of Mesa, as well as outside the City of Mason, what we call our Magma System. Our most recent recognition and award from national organizations is the American Public Power Association Certificate of Excellence and Reliability. And while we've had some challenges with reliability towards the end of last year, we've still achieved a very high level of reliability compared to our peers across the nation. So with that, I'm going to turn to a table that I, I really like this table because it shows how closely aligned what our priorities are, which is safety, reliability, and affordability are, how they align and correlate with what those council strategic initiatives and priorities are. So the one area where you see that we don't have any checked, boxes checked, is skilled and talented workforce. But what I will add is, and that's the way it's defined in the council's strategic initiatives. But what I will say is, we've developed internship programs within our department, especially for STEM students at local universities. And so we feel like we're helping contribute in a way that doesn't really show up in the definition, the way that the city defines skilled and talented workforce. We're also going to explain how a couple of these strategic initiatives and priorities closely correlate with our purpose and our priorities, especially as we start getting into some slides that talk about our performance measures. We also encourage our employees to take advantage of the city's tuition reimbursement program. So that goes into that skilled and talented workforce. At one time, we had up to six employees participating in the tuition reimbursement program. And John Petroff recently earned his Master's in Business Administration from Benedictine University. So kudos to him.
That's good.
The next initiative that I'm going to talk about is the Sustainable Economy one. There's two key aspects of this priority that I thought closely aligned with what we try to do, and that's keeping our energy utility rates affordable and building and maintaining and operating a quality infrastructure. So that would be safe and reliability in our lingo. And that's how we contribute towards Mesa achieving this priority. We also strive to continue and keep our services affordable and make them more affordable if we can. We minimize the amount of our customers' income. That's one of our approaches, is to minimize the amount of our customers' income that is spent on energy utility services, making them affordable. We've created programs such as the Summer Energy Assistance Program, which goes to help those low-income customers that help those low-income customers that struggle with their summer electric bills. Of course, that's when their electric bills increase because their consumption increases because of their use of their air conditioner. So that's to help those customers that struggle in that, in that period of time. We've also developed tools for the economic development and industrial development teams as well. So we have our rates that allow us to discount our rates for periods of time to use as an attraction tool for different types of businesses, industries. We also have a small business development tool in downtown Mesa where Jeff McVan and his team have used that tool oftentimes to help smaller businesses expand and grow. So the safety and reliability of our energy utility systems, the plugs, the wires, the poles, the valves, et cetera, it plays a vital role in the quality of the infrastructure that's so important to attracting businesses to Mesa and facilitating the growth. The next one I wanted to talk a little bit about was the healthy environment. We feel like its stewardship of the environment has been a really important underlying principle of how we manage your electric and gas utilities. It closely correlates with our priorities and our future plans, and we're really enthusiastic about the prominent role that our department can play in meeting the goals of the Mesa Climate Action Plan. As I think you've heard me talk about before, renewable resources make up about 20% of our current electric energy supply portfolio, and we continue to add to that supply portfolio. We've got now 118 customers that are participating in our customer-owned solar program. That contributes about 1.2 megawatts to our grid. And we also recently executed contracts with a solar provider for the installation of about 800 KW of solar on the ASU Building, the ICE Ring Administration Building, and the parking canopies that will be built for Mesa City Plaza and 59 North Center. So just those two elements will bring about 2 megawatts of solar into our grid. We're also continuing to pursue and negotiate agreements for about 20 megawatts of utility-scale solar. This would not be within our electric system. It's probably going to be in the Casa Grande area somewhere where we have transmission available to bring the power into our service area, but also of a magnitude where we can take advantage of those economies of scale. We're also likely to attach energy storage to that type of a contract as well. So an example of our efforts to enhance the energy efficiency was that grant that we were pursuing with the Fort McDaliyavapai Nation that we talked about earlier this morning. We've also supported the adoption of alternative fuels into the city's fleets. We've collaborated with environmental management and the conversion of their solid waste trucks to compress natural gas. We're also working very closely with them to find a way to make renewable gas out of some of our waste processing. We'll also be acquiring five electric vehicles if the budget's approved in the next fiscal year. So how will maximize the value of those? We'll put those vehicles in the hands of our employees that drive the most miles. That way, we can save the most tons of CO2 by avoiding the use of a gasoline internal combustion engine vehicle. So we're also helping to identify the enhancements to the electric distribution systems to support the EV charging systems that will be installed, both on city property as well as on private properties. And will be, those trigon stations will be needed, obviously, for the fleet additions to, the electric vehicle fleet additions to our Mesa fleet. One of the other things that's kind of a nuance to what we do is natural gas systems. We have a very definitive leak survey system, and so the leakage of natural gas is a potential contributor to global climate change. So we are going to enhance the technologies that we use to survey our system for leaks and to start probably repairing leaks that we would otherwise defer repairing of. So that's a common practice, that we don't fix every leak we find. Some leaks are worse than others. The potential consequences of some leaks are worse than others. The worst ones, we fix immediately. Others, we monitor for extended periods of time until it's time to repair those. We're probably going to start accelerating the pair of those leaks that we might otherwise defer. That'll help us achieve something like a climate action plan, and that helps us try to get to that net zero type of a goal for our climate action plan. So one of the things we'll talk a little bit about later is a energy system control room. That will make achieving many of our climate action plan goals much easier or possible than when they otherwise might not be possible. So I'm going to discuss that later in Slide 12. So as previously indicated, our department's top priority is safety, and enhancing the safety of our system enhances the safety of the communities we serve. So when we have a power outage and it, and it impairs the ability of a traffic signal, we understand that, and it causes us to be very concerned about the safety of the community because we know some of those traffic signals may not have emergency power backup, or the power backup may not last as long as it needs to. So we take that responsibility very seriously. One of the ways we measure the safety of our system on the electric side is the time it takes for our personnels to respond to an emergency situation. And we use that for both the electric and gas system. So the nature of these types of emergencies can range from an interruption of an electrical service from a windstorm or a carpool accident, or it can be related to a dig-in by a contractor on our gas system. So the nature of those types of events creates a much different challenge for us of how to respond. So the performance measure that we use is similar to that used by the Police Department, the Fire Medical Department. Kyle's going to discuss that measure that we use on the electric side.
Thank you, Frank. Good morning, Mayor and Council. As previously indicated, the safety of our system is our highest priority. This slide here indicates the electric emergency response time. That's the average time it takes for our electric personnel to respond to an emergency call once the, the call is made to our department. One of the measures we use here is to gauge the safety of our electric utility system. We have established 30 minutes as the maximum time for our staff to respond to an emergency. You can see here for fiscal year '21, '22, our average response time was 17.9 minutes. We're well below the 30-minute threshold there. Minimizing our response to electrical emergencies can also improve our reliability of service as well as will be discussed on Slide number 6.
Okay, so I'll handle the gas emergency response time. And again, it's our safety measure. We use the average time it takes to respond to emergency calls to gauge our performance. And what we've done is, we do a little bit differently than what we do just in average response time. So what we're looking at is very similar to what police and fire have started using, which is what percentage of our responses exceed 30 minutes? So we get thousands of calls a year on the gas side. And so using that data to come up and use just an average would not really give us a real clear picture of where we're responding to these emergency calls in a safe manner. We really want to limit that response time to 30 minutes. So we've gone to how many of our calls, in terms of percentage, exceed that 30-minute response time. So you can see that we've got a goal of about 9% going forward. Last year, it was 9.4%. The prior years were 9.4%. We changed it to 9% in July of last year, and you can see we're doing pretty well. We can go to the next slide. We also look at it in terms of a histogram where we separate out in five-minute increments how many of our different response events fall into these different categories. And so you can see most of our responses are much less than 30 minutes. About 3% of our calls exceed that 30-minute timeframe. So anytime we get a response that exceeds 30 minutes, we dig into what were the circumstances that caused that response to exceed 30 minutes? The typical reason is because we've got a service technician that's responding to calls simultaneously or one immediately after the other. So when we face that situation, we make safe, we may not fix, but we make safe one call, and then we get to the next call. And we fix that one, and then we go back to the initial call to fix the issue there. So that's oftentimes what causes that 30-minute, that second response is what takes us over 30 minutes typically. The other issue is, we do have that service territory down in Magma, and sometimes the traffic flows make it very difficult for us to get to a call down in Magma or to get from Magma back up to southeast Mesa, and that causes the timeframe to exceed 30 minutes. And sometimes it's, it's the distance and traffic as well as the simultaneous calls. We've used this data over time to significantly alter how we manage our resources. A couple of years ago, we added an additional technician to our standby rotation so that instead of one technician responding to all these calls, we added another person to the standby process, so.
Frank, do we have dedicated crews down in Magma? That, their primarily focus is that Magma gas system?
In terms of the emergency response personnel, that's correct. We do have people, we have, we're fortunate to have some people that live in and around the Magma area, so those are the people that report to the Magma area. We also have times where people might be on vacation, or they might be working on a special project where we have to send people back and forth. Emergency response people, there's quite a, quite a presence down there of staff that live in and around Magma so that we can staff it down there. We do have an office down there that we share with the irrigation district down there.
Okay, and that was going to be my next question. Do we have all the equipment stuff there to hit trucks, back those?
We do. Most of our crews will commute from the East Mesa Service Center down to Magma. The ones that are doing the new installations or repairs, most of those are traveling down there. We do have a small yard where we keep some materials, and we do keep some of our construction equipment down there.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a map of Magma in your presentation? I mean, for some of the council members, if there is one?
It's at the back, behind the last slide.
Okay, thank you. Because some of us are going, well, where's Magma at? You know, even.
Do you want us to show you that real quick? I think we can.
They can just go, go, keep going.
We can find it, continue on. Thank you.
All right. So the next slide we'll talk about is electric reliability. And so the way we measure reliability is using a industry standard index. It was developed by the Institute of Electrical and Electronic Engineers in the '60s, as I recall, and it's called the System Average Interruption Duration Index. You've got to leave it to electrical engineers to come up with that type of a, of an acronym. So what it measures is, based upon historical data, what would our customers expect to experience in terms of an outage on an ongoing basis? So the average customer. So it's a, it's a very similar type of calculation to what Chris explained for the water. And so we take the number of customers that are impacted by an outage and the duration of their outage, and we massage that into an index that says, on average, here's the amount of interruption time that any customer might experience on our system. So you can see how we've set that target. Now, we look at this one on a cumulative basis rather than on a monthly basis. So you can see that in January and February, we typically forecast that we have very minimal outages. The outages increase sequentially until we get into the, the May-June timeframe when the winds pick up and we start having wind and weather-related outages. Most of our interruptions and services are attributable to weather and animals. So we have a lot of bird-related outages, four-legged critter outages, as well as the vegetation. So as you can see, that, that accumulation of outage times increases until we get into December. So you can see in '20, '20, that our performance was quite good. We didn't experience a large number of outages in the summertime. We do a lot of different things to try and minimize our exposure to those outages, and sometimes we're lucky enough where the weather is pretty mild and we don't have a lot of monsoon storms. Oftentimes, though, we'll have an equipment failure, and that's part of what you see, those spikes in last year in the June-July timeframe. And then in December, we actually had a human error that caused a dramatic increase in that spike there. And so we'll talk a little bit more about how we plan to remedy preventing that human-caused So one of the things I will say is, the best way for us to keep this index down is to prevent the outage in the first place. Once an outage happens, it's that emergency response time that really helps us keep that outage down. The time it takes to replace a fuse, we've made that about as efficient as possible. The amount of time that it takes to respond to the outage and the prevention of the outage is our best way of keeping this SADI index down as low as possible. And of course, also avoiding any type of human error. So one of the things we do to minimize our equipment failures or getting to the point of catastrophic is we do a lot of inspections. So Mayor, at our youth council meetings, we love to show how we use our infrared cameras to inspect our electrical equipment. So we can use those cameras to identify a piece of equipment that's showing exorbitantly high or inordinately high temperatures. Those inordinately high temperatures are often a precursor to a catastrophic failure. So if we can do a planned replacement of that transformer or that switch or that fuse bank, as opposed to waiting for it to catastrophically fail, we can bring down our SADI dramatically. So we also keep track of the geographical areas and the customers that have experienced high outages, high interruption events, and so we'll target tree trimming possibly for that area because some areas, the vegetation grows much faster than it does other, in other areas, and so we will target that area for an accelerated tree trimming schedule. We've talked about, a little bit about that, Ms. Spillsberry. And we've also put up bird guards, et cetera, for prevention as well. So with that, let's go to the frequency of outages. So this is a little bit of a different index. It's the System Average Interruption Frequency Index. So this is a measure of not so much the duration of the outages. We do do that calculation for gas, but what's most useful for us on the gas side is the frequency. How frequent can a customer expect to have their gas service interrupted? Because gas is typically below ground, we don't have the, the number of outages that we do on the gas, on the electric side, excuse me. So you can see there, we had a couple of spikes, and it's a, it was, as we were going through the data, what jumped out to me was how we can have very few customers be impacted by outage, but once that outage duration started increasing, it made these, this indices jump. So in October of '18, that was caused by a contractor dig-in in and around our Magma area. It interrupted service to 39 customers for approximately seven hours. Now, as Councilmember Thompson knows, the biggest challenge to preventing dig-ins is from contractors not abiding by the blue-stake marks, the blue-stake laws, digging safely, using safe practices, and making the call for the digs, the marks to begin with. So in that instance, it was a, it was an unsafe dig on the part of the contractor.
Frank, are we recovering our costs on those?
We do account for those costs, especially when there's overtime incurred because that's really when the costs start accumulating. And we do file claims with the contractor. I'm not sure how successful we are on the recovery of those costs. I can look into that for you. The spike in August '19 was also in Magma. It was similarly caused by a contractor dig-in. In that instant, this was a four-inch gas main, and that interrupted service to 72 customers for 14 hours. So you can see the relative spike in the index. So if there's no questions on our safety, reliability, performance measures, indices, I'm going to turn it over to Tony Kudorn and have him talk about our energy supply efforts.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So what you'll see are cumulative graphs of our gas and electric supply costs. This is electric across the past three fiscal years. So when we came to you in June 2021, we noted that there was a very large spike in electric supply prices that we were seeing. And when we put that in front of you, we had an estimate that the 2021 fiscal year would end around $30 million, and the 22, 20, 21, 22 fiscal year would end somewhere between $40 and $60 million. Well, happy to report that we've stayed substantially below those numbers. We ended, or are projected to end... We ended, or are projected to end this fiscal year at closer, closer to $30 million rather than that $40 to $60. And last fiscal year, we ended closer to $15 million or $16 million instead of that $30. So we were very conservative with those estimates and we've really been working hard to lock in prices and capture deals where we can. So moving forward into fiscal year 2223, we're looking closer to $22 million. So down $8 million from this year. And continuing to chip away at that as best we can. So supporting that effort, as Frank mentioned, we'll have 800 kilowatts of solar in downtown Mesa. 1.1 to 1.2 kilowatts of customer-owned solar. So that's customers with net metering who are generating both their own power and contributing power to the utility. We're working on the 3-megawatt, 3-4-megawatt microgrid at the PD campus, working on inexpensive utility-scale solar, internal generation. And so with the market remaining tight and pressure on hydroelectric supplies, we're really working to continue to diversify our electric supply portfolio. On the gas side.
On that topic, before you, I, I know this last year, we've used a substantial amount of COVID relief money to cushion the, you know, the impact of that catastrophic rate or cost of wholesale electricity. I, I appreciate all you're doing to increase our electric generation capacity with solar and gas, and that's, that's wonderful. But I can't imagine that's, I mean, at some point, we're going to run out. What are we going to do a year or two from now? I guess it's entirely dependent on what the wholesale cost of electricity looks like, right? But assuming it doesn't dramatically decrease like it dramatically increased, are we, are our electric customers going to be paying, you know, above-market rates for their, for their electricity?
Mayor, they're not going to be paying above-market. They're, because we're only passing on the market.
By market, I mean compared to SRP.
Yeah. Well, first of all, the assistance that we're providing was for that specific period of time where we had that tremendous spike. And we are using ARPA dollars to reimburse, or not reimburse, not the right word, offset those costs over a two-year period. So that continues today. I think we set aside $20 million. I think to date, we're somewhere around $6, $7 million. It's already been dispersed to Mesa Electric customers to offset that specific spike. And it will continue for the next year, I guess, year and a half. So we can evaluate at the end of that and see where our costs are relative to SRP or others. But at least for now, the plan is in place and we're executing that plan to offset that spike that they occurred, really as a result of a natural causes, right? Wasn't that the one that caused because of the freeze and some other things, too?
Yeah, it, it's really the western regional markets. And so while we're a lot more at risk than SRP was of the spikes in the wholesale markets because we were, other than our 20% renewable contracts for the hydro, we were on the market for the other 80% of our energy supplies. SRP heavily relies upon the market, but not as much as we do. But they also rely upon natural gas for a lot of their generation as well. So natural gas prices have also increased. And it, it wasn't just one issue. I wish we could say it was the, the Texas freeze because then we just got to winterize plants and winterize natural gas systems and, and we should be able to minimize our risks. But it's things like plants being retired across the 11 western states. It's the coal plants that have been retired. It, it's the, the fires in California that shaded the solar panels that California's become so heavily dependent upon to supply their electrical requirements. We went from them overproducing solar several years ago and paying us to take the excess solar generation to now where that solar, what, didn't show up because of the cloud cover and the smoke cover, and the retirements hit as well. And, and demand started picking up, and so the, the market. So the, the prices that we faced at the peak a couple of years ago was in the $250 per megawatt hour range and that, and above, up to, at certain hours, $9,000 per megawatt hour?
Yeah, around $3,000, yeah.
$3,000 per megawatt hour? And this year, the, the prices that we paid were in the 150 to 180 range. So they've already come down some. They're still much higher than what they were five years ago. But SRP is also in that same market, trying to find ways to get below $150 per megawatt hour supplies. Those supplies historically were in the $50 to $80 per megawatt hour range. And we rely upon a substantial amount of that market supplied power to meet our customers' requirements. So that's why we're coming forward with the microgrid. That, that's a small-sized generator in the big scheme of things, but if we can use that as a template for multiple other microgrids, then it's going to be a short-term issue where our costs are high relative, and our rates are rela, high relative to SRP. But SRP also has upward pressure on their rates as well. Remember that before we entered into this period of time, our residential rates were about 20% less than SRP's. And unfortunately, we had that heavy exposure to the market where it caused our rates but for the ARPA money to keep our rates comparable with SRP. And I can tell you, I am very, very humbled that the city manager and the council found a way to offset those increased costs on our customers. That, that's probably the most humbling thing I've ever experienced in my, my career. So it's motivated us to do as many creative things as we can, to go out and find ways to mitigate the exposure that we have in the future. Those long-term agreements with utility-scale solar, so we're not dealing with 800 kW rooftop-type solar within our service area on city buildings, we're dealing with 10s and 20 megawatts of solar. But we also have to back that up with batteries because when solar energy is produced, it doesn't align up power-wise with when our customers and the city requires electricity for air conditioning. So we have to do things like batteries and do things like microgrid generation to kind of balance and make sure that that solar energy gets to be used for our customers when it's most important, most critical. We also have proposals that we're looking at to build internal generation like what SRP is doing with their, their aerod derivative turbines. Now, we probably won't be using aerod derivative turbines. We're probably going to be using internal combustion engines, but it's a very similar concept and planning philosophy of bringing that generation in internal into our system and using it so we insulate ourselves from the market forces outside. We actually identified this in our 2018 Integrated Resource Plan. We just thought we had more time before the reserve margins and the market conditions cratered on us and caused those prices to spike.
Well, I, I appreciate that. And I, I absolutely endorse the subsidies that we're using right now, but I, I just share your concern with what happens a year or two from now when that federal safety net isn't there? How are we going to, are we going to be competitive?
Hopefully, the prices will stabilize.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, when, when we first went through this exercise, we kind of settled between us and budget on a number that about $20 million of annual portfolio costs on the electric side will give us parity with SRP. So coming to the end of this year, we're looking at around $29 million. So there's, there's that $9 million delta that we're hoping is going to be supported by ARPA funds. And then our best estimate for next fiscal year, so 2223, is only $22 million. So, you know, we foresee that 20 million as SRP's prices go up. You know, maybe as that comes up a little bit, we're able to reduce costs. We think that ARPA funding will be able to be stretched.
The bridge is, that.
The bridge is going to be longer, yeah.
Great, thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I have a 10 o'clock, or another meeting I have to get to, but I just wanted, before I left, to say thank you for Frank and you, all of you guys, not only for your outstanding safety record, because I don't think people realize the environment that you guys and your staff work in. So thank you for your safety record and for always thinking outside the box when it comes to protecting our community from the higher rates and so forth. And always enjoy our conversations, Frank. So thank you, guys.
Frank, why don't we get to your enhancements? It was kind of good. Okay, we, we go there. I'll, I'll spend just a couple of minutes on each slide. So we've got two areas of budget enhancement requests. One is to supplement our existing utility locator staff. So one of the things that's not really well-known is that this team is the frontline protector of the city's underground infrastructure and assets. So this group responds to the blue stake requests. We were given two working days to identify up to 10 different pieces of underground infrastructure across the city when somebody wants to come in and excavate. So that's, I'm going to have to resort to my list. So it's the chilled water system in downtown, the electric system downtown, the gas utility system across the city, the IT department's communications fiber systems, the reclaimed water system, the storm drain system, the streetlights, the traffic signals, including the fiber optic network for the intelligent transportation system, water and wastewater sewer system. So talk about a Rubik's Cube. This is a Rubik's Cube out in the middle of the intersections with traffic wasn't by you. So again, the, the federal regulations require us to identify and mark with visible paint or, or stakes that infrastructure so that people can safely excavate. Now, one of the new technologies or practices for installing underground infrastructure is boring. So instead of an open trench, they have a big underground drill bit that drills through the earth. And if not done properly, as it gets near and crosses over or under or into our underground infrastructure, it can cause serious damage. And without somebody onsite watching and monitoring that boring process, we can have a lot of damage done to our underground infrastructure. So in the last couple of years, the linear feat of boring monitoring that we've had to undertake has risen by 55%. So that shows how much this type of construction practice is being used and how much of the development activity is relying upon it. So that's the, the lead locator. The other one is just a matter of, we're not showing any problems or downward trends with the accuracy or our damage prevention program, but we are hearing from our employees through the surveys, but the workload, the amount of overtime that they're carrying from week to week to month to month to year to year is getting overwhelming, and we need to supplement the staff. So you can look at the number of locating tickets. So a ticket is a request to locate each different piece of our underground infrastructure at the time when the blue state ticket is requested. So the next one is for a control room. So there's a CIP project for converting our old utilities control center over on Sixth Street into a energy control room. Right now, it's used as an emergency operations center for the gas, electric utilities, and also Parks and Rec and solid waste use it for some purposes. So we're going to convert that into a dedicated energy control room. Right now, we have a irregularly manned, very small, undersized control room within the utilities control center. Our electric and our gas systems are not continuously monitored or operated. On the electric side, we divert our substation electricians and our electric meter foremen from their normal jobs, which are very, very technically demanding and sometimes physically demanding, and we bring them into the control room. So that outage that we had in December, the human error was caused by one of those sub, field professionals coming into the control room, performing the switching process. There was an error made, and that's what caused that outage. So what we've shown here in this slide is if we had not had that human error-caused outage, our SADI index for 2021 would have been according to the red line rather than the blue line. So while I'm not going to guarantee that our control room personnel won't have similar human errors, I am confident that it will be avoided. I am confident that they will be focused and dedicated to ensuring that safety and reliability of our system in ways that the way we currently staff that control room, we can't do it. Can't, can't make that assurance. So this control room will also do a lot of other things other than just monitoring and controlling the electric and gas systems. We'll put in their hands the responsibilities to maximize the benefits of things like solar energy and energy storage. They'll look at when the time is right, when fuel prices are right, and when the market prices are high of when to, to operate those PD microgenerators up to 5,000 hours a year. They'll be the people that are making the real-time decisions of when to operate the microgrid and when to operate the generators within the microgrid. They'll also be doing things like, we, we oftentimes find ourselves remarketing and reselling some of our services for interstate transportation or transmission on the electric side. So we remarket and resell those. We're going to expand the amount of time that we spend on analyzing when we have that excess service or that excess capacity and remarketing and reselling. So we think we're going to generate, all told, about a million dollars of new benefit to the, the City of Mesa's electric and gas utilities on an annual basis with the control room. And, and we think it'll be very helpful for also a lot of other climate action plan measures. But one of the things that we're most excited about is, is bringing that renewable gas into our gas system. But there is a requirement to make sure that the, that the gas is cleaned up to the standards. We want to make sure that there's not corrosive elements remaining in the gas that comes from the gas cleanup plant. And we want to make sure it doesn't have higher levels of moisture, water, or carbon dioxide than what we're allowed to put in our gas pipelines. So that will wrap up.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions for these gentlemen before we conclude? All right, thank you. I guess that concludes these agenda items related to our, our budget hearings. Next item on our agenda is to acknowledge receipt of various minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Vice Mayor, seconded by Ms. Spillsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes with the three, four, or five members that are here. Next item is current events and conferences attended. I know you've been busy, Council. Who would like to share? Mr. Freeman?
I'll, I'll jump in. Thank you, Mayor. I, I did a tour of the Police Dispatch Center yesterday and talked to the SLORY person there, SLORY, and they were able to divert 321 police calls last month. So I thought that was really awesome. And then we talked to some of the mechanics there. So when I say about the mechanics of how it operates, so it was very informative and I learned a lot. I'd also like to just announce a longtime Mesa resident's death. Kevin Rogers died yesterday. He was president of Maricopa and Arizona Farm Bureau, as well as Executive Director of Arizona Cotton Growers, longtime farmer. He's been in our council meetings sometimes in the past, talking about when we had our farms in Pinellas County. But his death was unexpected and he's been a great asset to a lot of people in Arizona. So he is influence to be missed. So thank you. Yes, I hosted a Farm Bureau breakfast at the farm, and many, all of you were there. So I appreciate that and had a great turnout with Supervisor, what's his name?
Galvin.
I see if Anna was here.
She is.
Totally absent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And Supervisor Galvin did a great job. It was, it was a good introduction for him to the community. Who else? Vice Mayor?
I'll try to be real quick. Of course, Saturday was Celebrate Mesa, a great turnout, so much fun. I really, especially, all the city departments were there doing great things. But the most cool for me was the Hispanic Network or the part of, of city doing that because they had the Encanto character, so I was the coolest grandma ever to have my picture with the Encanto characters. Also, on Saturday night, the mayor and I attended the First Presbyterian Church 75th Anniversary Celebration. Thank you to Joe Wilson for including us. And it's been, their history has been part of Mesa's history. Of course, they are located in the downtown area, so it was very interesting, and we highly regard them. A few other things, but that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just echo what you said, the, I was blown away by how beautiful the, the worship building was for First Presbyterian Church. If you haven't been inside and you're looking for a place to worship this Sunday, this is amazing, a pipe organ, and I just, I can't believe I hadn't been there before. I was very impressed. Also, Celebrate Mesa, I had the same experience that I think all of you did. I, I remember being there, looking around, thinking this really is the best day of the year for a lot of the, the families that, that were there. So congratulations to Parks and Rec and everyone involved in that. I thought it was really an amazing event. And Pioneer Park has never looked so good. It was just fun to see it totally activated in such a wonderful way. It was just fun to see it totally activated in such a wonderful way. Yesterday, some of us met with Arizona State Housing Director Tom Simplot, had a very productive meeting, and it was fun to see. I appreciated his willingness to come to Mesa and work with us on, on some of those issues. And then also, I think it was yesterday, I was pleased to welcome the Arizona Housing Coalition Conference to Mesa. This was several hundred people in our convention center, all talking about, these are professionals in local government on housing and homelessness, and they were very complimentary and appreciated what we're doing, and that was, that was, I just appreciated the opportunity to do that. That concludes current events. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, Monday, we'll continue discussions related to the budget. At 4:30, we'll hear from Environmental Management and Sustainability Group. That will also include the proposal for our implementation of, for this year, of the Climate Action Plan. That'll be included in that presentation.
Great. Thank you. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Reddick, seconded by Ms., did you know that you made that motion? Yeah, all right. Thank you, Ms. Billsbury, for seconding that. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.